It's amazing how you take some questions. You never know this before.
Right.
I'm just in context.
Okay.
Okay. Comes in context. Three, I think. Yeah. They did not like paper. And he didn't like paper. Now, they wanted to know about everyone. You know, so for jobs. Yeah, that makes makes some sense. There's like the jail facility itself. Some of those were. This is my issue. Sell bonds. Two levels. That makes sense.
Wake up here, Phyllis.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Start with Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the religious stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice from.
Roll call.
Mockler.
Here.
Packard.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing an approved agenda with the request to add vouchers and open meetings rules. And.
Joint Powers.
Discussion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
She proveth.
Is it just her or is it the whole thing? Well, that's, I think it's just her. She did say her internet connection might be spotty, so. Packard.
Here.
And Mockler.
Yes. Motion passes, approve minutes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes. And just so everyone's aware, we've lost Betty. So. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing done. We gotta wait till nine fifteen on that, don't we? Uh. Vouchers, everybody get to see those.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll take a motion. Move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes.
Welcome back, Betty.
Well, I'm on an island in Maine and the wifi is iffy, so we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Do you wanna give your update on the.
Oh, certainly.
Joint Powers.
Last Thursday evening, we had a joint powers meeting of the joint Yankton Vermillion Solid Waste. And report that the Vermillion recycling facility is basically the upgrade is finished. There's one issue is still to be repaired this week or next. The. Big news was the next trench is well underway, being constructed. And the bid on that came in about half what the engineer estimate.
Wow.
Yeah. Big time lovely for the joint powers. They expect that to be done by, I think it's October twenty sixth, thereabouts. So things are moving along. The household hazardous waste program went very well. There were about three hundred vehicles present in Yankton and eighty in Vermillion. A lot of material came in. It was obvious that. Your pandemic had a effect on home repairs. With that. I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, we've got ten more minutes before we can go to the second reading. Let's do the open meetings rules discussion. Let's get started on that.
Okay. I know something was sent out by. Our legal department there. But back when I was first made a commissioner or elected commissioner. At one of the conferences, we had an open meetings. Session with the state and the association. And it was stated very strongly that it is not correct for a commissioner to send a email to all other commissioners. That is a meeting. It should go directly to Carrie and then she will either put it on the agenda or send it out as appropriate. Just wanted to reiterate that that is a longstanding. Accepted rule. Any other?
Any other?
Thoughts or?
Concur.
Concur.
I agree. I don't think Sam won. Yeah, we don't wanna get any trouble over any of this.
Yeah.
No. We've got. We've got a little time to kill before we can get to the second reading. So I'm gonna call a recess.
You know, we could.
I hated to start that since we've only got. Six minutes.
Okay.
Didn't wanna. Start and stop and start and stop, so I just thought we'd just wait the six minutes for the first reading and get through that.
So remain in recess.
Yes.
We are still in recess. So. We're back in session. Now is the time for the second reading and adoption of ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero two and twenty twenty one dash zero three. Do you have anything to add, Drew, to this or? Is there any? Well, I was just gonna ask if there's any proponents. Any opponents?
Do we need to read the title?
I'll read, okay. So the ordinance twenty twenty one dash zero two is a temporary ordinance regarding the issue of local medicinal medical cannabis establishment permits and or licenses. And twenty twenty one dash zero three is a temporary ordinance regarding the issue of local medicinal cannabis establishment permits and or licenses for the joint jurisdiction area.
Second. Or did you already do that?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes.
That motion was for both ordinances, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Courthouse jail discussion. Where do we wanna start with this? Do we want? Tom to walk us through options or? Yeah. Where should we start?
Why don't we start with Tom on one?
Yeah, I can't hear, somebody's not using a microphone.
You can move that one down too, if you want. Yeah, should we move that one up? Or yeah, there you go.
I suggest we start by having Tom kinda walk through the different financing options in this. The things we talked about, if we were discussed last week, can shed a little more light on those.
Oh, I think I remember this one. We've seen part of it.
Okay, so Tom Groomen from. No. There you go. Up beside, okay.
No.
Uh, so Tom Groomen from Call Your Securities and out of Sioux Falls. And we do financings for cities, county schools, and here we are with the county looking at doing financing possibly for a new jail. And so what I did was I pulled out a little presentation I've done before for other counties. I labeled it Clay County and kinda gave the the high points. Uh, and then I also passed out an index of what the the current tax exempt interest rates are doing and where they're at historically, where they've been. So just kind of to point out that what everybody I think has heard, that interest rates are very good right now. And the pressure for upward movement is probably greater than downward movement currently with interest rates, especially with all the discussion of inflation, possible inflation. And, you know, the more in in the economy heating up. And of course, you know, you hear that term, you you think the Fed will act. I know what they've said. Maybe no interest rate hikes until twenty twenty three, but again, if the economy continues to improve and housing prices continue to soar, I mean, the Fed's gotta step in and do something. Is that sooner or later? I I don't know, but right now rates are very good. So what I wanted to cover, I guess, was some of the other options, the general obligation bond failed at forty one million dollars. But there there are other options that the that the county can do for financing. And I've listed those in financing options under two there. And one, of course, is the general obligation bond, which you went went for the first time for the whole the whole project. Number two is what they call building fund bonds. And at one time, building fund bonds, you could raise your levy within the building fund up to ninety cents per thousand, and that did not require a vote. And that that changed with the tax reform that they did back in, I think it was ninety seven. So so that that changed and became a vote. That required a fifty percent. Vote, a simple majority vote to pass building fund bonds. The other avenues that are available are number number three and number four are under seven twenty one sixteen dash one. The county can enter into a lease purchase agreement for ten years. And then if it's for a specific project like a jail, they can go out to twenty years on that project. That requires a. The wording is more than sixty percent of the commission voting, so more than sixty percent, because three of three of five is only sixty percent, requires four of five to actually pass this in South Dakota. So even though that's, I think that's eighty percent, if I do my math right, right? Any math teachers here? Oh, that's right, I'm a finance guy. Anyway. I'm lost without my calculator. So that's a requirement for that section, go up to twenty years and can do jails. This that this process here is is referable, meaning you would pass a resolution. And then after publication, twenty days after publication, five percent of the registered voters at the last round election could. Could refer this to a vote. And then again, the vote would be a simple majority. Number four is the one we've used the most recently with the with the tax law changes is similar to number three, except it uses language from seven twenty five nineteen. And which allows for a an issuer like Clay County, Clay County would be an issuer, to do, say, a sale leaseback. So they could issue, you know, basically the same type of bonds as number three. You could do limited tax Geo bonds under the building, under the ninety cents per thousand within the building fund. And, you know, with a. Some people have taken the position with just a majority vote of three of five from the commission. I I feel safer if it's four or five, because that's kind of the rule out there. If you're gonna raise taxes, you need at least, you need at least more than sixty percent of the board acting. So I think you're safer if you have at least four of the five. So that's that's kind of it in a nutshell. Number five of that financing options basically just talks about three and four again. It says, you know, if it's made subject to referendum, either for free may may would be in addition to existing levies, which again, basically fits with under what ten ten thirteen thirty five talks about within that whole section about raising the levy, whether it's an opt out or or not. The the thing about this is the way the language is written is that these projects would be, this levy increase would be specific, as opposed to an opt out. An opt out would just raise your levy, be allow you to raise your levy a certain dollar amount. These are project specific. So if you if you went and did one of either three or four and and did a lease purchase, you would do, say, a jail. And that would be, and you would say for twenty years or twenty, you know, if we did four, you could go up to thirty years. If you did, if you did that, then that levy would be only be in place for that amount of time. And then once the bonds are paid off, certificates are paid off, then that levy would go away, as opposed to these others where if you if you had a vote like in the building fund and raised the levy, say you wanted to raise it to fifty cents per thousand, you have ninety there, then that levy would be outstanding. In in perpetuity. It wouldn't just be for a specific issue, if that makes sense. So that's. That's really it. I just wanted to really cover the other, those two two areas. I did put the law, if you kinda wanna look at. I did put the law on the next, the next two pages. It's. So under six eight B one, it talks about what a bond is. And a bond really is any commitment. That the commission or city or school. Enters into where there's a pledge to make a future payment. And that's considered a bond. So six A B two, it then says, election must, an election is required for issuance unless otherwise provided for. No bond may be issued unless there's an election and a sixty percent vote. Well, in seven twenty five three, it talks about the fact that you can have an election and it only needs to be a majority vote, qualified voters. So submitted the voter voters of such counties shall have been approved by a majority of the votes so cast. So that's where. Six eight D is general law that covers everything. And then specific law overrules general. And and again, I'm not an attorney, this is what I've been told by attorneys, bond councils. City attorneys and others. So seven twenty five is specific to county law. And it within the county law, it stipulates that that's where you get to that majority majority vote, which was a question. Earlier about how things are voted on or what the what the hurdle was, because someone had thrown out, well, six eight D is sixty percent. Well, seven twenty five three says it's fifty percent for counties. So so that's fifty percent. That's how we get to that number. And then the next one, we kinda go backwards a little bit. That was seven twenty five three, seven twenty five one says the proceeds, and I highlighted the what really counts here, the proceeds of a levy authorized by this section may be pledged by the county to payments under an agreement entered into under seven twenty five nineteen. And we'll get to seven, seven twenty five nineteen with without regard to limitations of seven twenty five three. So the way the way bond councils and others have read this. Is that seven twenty five three says you have to have, you can't, or seven twenty five one says you can't raise the levy unless you have a vote. Seven twenty five three basically outlines. You know, that the vote only has to be, it has to be a majority vote. And then, but seven twenty five one, which is interesting, then says, without regard to limitation of seven twenty five three. And that's been interpreted by, again, by attorneys, that that means that. You don't have to have a vote if you're following seven twenty five nineteen. Basically, and then seven twenty five nineteen basically talks about how you can, how you can issue bonds. Through a sale leaseback process and. Why it's not required that you have to have a vote upfront. Now, it is, again, it is subject to referendum, meaning reverse referendum, meaning that five percent of the public can. You know, send it to a vote once a resolution is passed. So that's, that's. You know, how this kind of works together. And again, I'm not an attorney, but we can go over it if you wanted to, probably not. But and then I'm sure your attorney can, your state's attorney can look at it also and and kinda get a feel for it. But there, we've done, and then said, I'm sorry, and then let me, don't wanna gloss over ten thirteen thirty five, talks about, you know, being able to lay raise your levy above the current rate, which is. You know, set by the state, basically, you get inflation or CPI, whichever's the lesser of. So it it does talk about how you can do that. And by having it. Subject to referendum, your resolution, then you can proceed with a lease purchase and, you know. Build a facility by using the language that's been set out there for the county to use lease purchase or sale leaseback options to be able to do a county building. Now, I say that, some examples is are, we've we've used this in Pennington County, Minnella County, their jail, their big jail was done under basically seven, seven twenty five nineteen. Lincoln County has done a couple, they did their shop and their addition to their courthouse. Actually, they were the first ones after the law changed to use seven twenty five nineteen and and. That that issue wasn't referred. I'm trying not to get too much into the weeds on it, but but that's the way we've done a few of these. Brookings County also used the same type of language. Again, we'd have to, you know, kinda chat with the state's attorneys and see if they sign off on it. You know, I've I've found over the years, one one attorney's opinion is sometimes different than another attorney's opinion. So we'd have to, you know, step through all that and clear all that and make sure. That the state's attorney would be on board with this. I haven't chatted with her at all, so. But again, this is, this is an avenue. We've done other financings for counties and other for for projects in other counties in the state of South Dakota.
We'd have to find somebody to build the building and then lease it back from them? Is that how I understand that?
Well, in essence, how they do it here is you 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 would name a a trustee like U S Bank or somebody like that as your agent to construct the building.
Okay.
So they basically have the money and they they would work with, you know, Dick's folks and the architects and the and the engineers, everybody that's building the building. And then the payments actually would come through the county, the county would submit them to the trustee, and that's how the building is built. And then basically, they know, and this seems to be always a sticky, a sticky subject. There's no. There's no title that transfers. So the land is really always in the county's name. There's no, no title ever transfers. How they gain control or how the the hook for a bondholder on this is that there's a ground lease that's established. So if the county, for whatever reason, even though by law you can't really not levy, if you decided not to levy taxes. You can be forced in court to levy taxes, but if you decided not to, what the ground lease does allows the trustee to come in and basically take the the access of the building away. And so that's the hook. I mean, you spend, you spend ten million dollars on a building and and they can come in and by by virtue of the fact that they have a ground lease, can take access to the building away. And so that's the hook for the bondholders. They know you don't wanna give up your county facilities if you spend all that money on it. So so that's, that's the security for that. So so at the end of twenty years or thirty years, you know, it's it's a one dollar payment, you know, it's just part of debt service and you pay the one dollar at the end and and the building is all yours.
Tom, one clarification. The difference between seven twenty five one and seven twenty five nineteen, are both of those have the limits of ninety cents per per thousand? What are the limits of of?
Right, and it's. It it, we've, you know, we've taken the position that it is the ninety cents per thousand. On both of those. Because it isn't a, the only way you, the only way you get out of the ninety, at least in our interpretation and the bond councils I've worked with, the only way you get out from under the ninety cents per thousand limitation is if you if you do a Geo issue.
So what is the value? What is that limit in this county? What is ninety cents?
Right, so I, as I mentioned the other day, I think I.
Like a million a year.
Yeah.
Cause I think we're valued at one point one billion.
Right, one point two, I think. Right, so what I figured out was at ninety cents, you know, over thirty years, if you did ninety cents per thousand, over thirty years and your valuation didn't grow at all. Just today, it'd be about twenty three million dollars you could do. If if that's what Dick's asking.
Oh, twenty three million for the project.
For the project, right.
And then that. That would cover interest.
Right, that's your.
Cent would cover interest also.
Right, so assuming you're, assuming what your annual payment is, I basically, I just took the forty one million dollar deal and figured out what your annual payment was gonna be on that. And it's pretty linear, because we were doing level debt service. So then I backed into what ninety cents were produced and ninety ninety cents per thousand produced enough revenue annually to retire twenty three million dollars in debt over for thirty years with that same interest rate structure. Does that make sense? So obviously, if interest rates go up, then that dollar amount goes down, because that was, that's your total payment by that ninety cents.
So how does that work then? What type of interest rate would your? Like you said, U S Bank, what type of interest rate would they give us?
Oh, okay, so.
Versus the general obligation.
Right, so, well, first, let's clarify that too, is that U S Bank just is the trustee on this. They're not actually buying the bonds. So it's not quite like a sale leaseback. You're still gonna get the best interest rates that are available by having a public sale. You would have a public sale, so individuals would buy the bonds. So local taxpayers would still have a chance to buy bonds and participate in this. They're just gonna act as the trustee, hold the money and help build the project. So given that it's, but that's still a good question. There is a difference. I mean, even though you will, and what we've seen with the counties in Lincoln and Minnella and and Brookings just recently. The rating was basically the same. They gave a Geo rating, the Geo rating was double A one, and they gave the certificates, these are called certificates. They gave them a rating of double A one also. But because they're certificates, and there's this kind of a misnomer about certificates out there, even though your pledge is you're evocable for this, there's still probably a five to ten basis point on the longer end payment that you're gonna pay on this. You know, ten basis points is is one tenth of one percent. So. So you'll you'll you will play it, pay a little bit more in interest, because you're doing, if you went this avenue than if you had Geo bonds. But basically, the ratings, they've been putting the ratings right on top of of your Geo rating, so so that's good. They see it as this basically the same kinda credit. They don't, what they call notch you, they don't not, they don't notch the rating at all.
So you don't have a fixed rate, interest rate, is that what you say?
No, you still have a fixed interest rate over that thirty year period, right? I think I kinda said, I alluded to it would change, it doesn't, no, it does not change. I'm I'm saying up until the point where you fix those or sell the bonds, rates could change.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not an annual thing where rates change annually or whatever and reduces the amount. No, that doesn't happen. It's, it'll be fixed at the time of sale for that twenty or thirty year period, twenty five year period.
So right now, if we did that. We could build a twenty three million dollar jail, correct?
Yes, I mean, I.
Yeah.
I, yeah, well, you'd have twenty three million dollars over a thirty year period. Now, I.
Covers the interest and.
That covers interest and principal.
Be about twelve to fifteen, wouldn't it?
No, no, that's that, that's the, that's the amount of money it would produce.
We can, we can do twenty three million of principal.
Right, twenty three million of of construction funds.
Okay.
Because again, I just extrapolated the forty one million where produced forty one million for construction and basically used those same numbers. Interest rates have actually gotten a little better. Since I ran those numbers, but but I, just to try and keep everything apples to apples, I used the same numbers we did for the forty one million and then figured figured what it would be based on that. And then backed into a twenty three million dollar at ninety cents. Now, with that said, now I I gave you what the max is, and that takes you right to ninety cents. I mean, I I guess I'm not, I'm not a big fan of taking anything to the max. I mean, I guess I'd put put the burden on Dick and his group to try and come up with something that's not twenty three million dollars. I mean, it'd be nice to have some cushion there and have, you know, something in the eighteen to twenty million range maybe and leave you guys some cushion. Granted, that cushion grows as the valuation grows too. You know, but. You know. You know, you can't count on that. You know, you could have stagnant tax tax or. You know, you could have stagnant tax, tax or, uh, valuation for the next 20 years too. I don't know, I'm kind of a conservative guy. I'm always worried about the downside, I guess, so. But I wouldn't take it that far, I guess. But I'm just trying to give you a number to give you an idea. So, you know, you could do that much if you had to. But, you know, I would, I would recommend that you don't, you know, something like in the 18 to 20 million range would be probably what I would recommend.
And you were saying, basing this on 30 years?
That was 30 years, yes.
So what we were looking at on the bond for the jail and law enforcement was 26.2 million for jail and law enforcement. Now, 6.2 million of that is cities, the city side.
Oh, okay.
How does that work? I mean, that would put us like at that 19, eight to 20 million. Is that other 6 million got to be tied in with this? Or does the city write their own?
Well, the city would, well, um, this, well, it depends on how the city wants to do it. I mean, I, I don't know what kind of agreement you guys have with the city. I know like in Brookings, Brookings, um, they came in, the county actually had to finance their piece of the, of the city facility. Actually, they, they, the city built a bigger facility and the, and the county was only leasing a piece of that. So they only had a floor within their, their big city hall building up there. So they came in and did their own financing for that. I don't know, I don't know what agreement, but in Minnella County, it's kind of the difference. The county built the big building and then the city now leased, or is it the other way around? This, no, the, the city built the big building, the, the public service building, and then the county leases space for them. So they built the whole building and they just pay them. So they didn't do any bonds for that. So, I don't know, I guess we'd have to figure that out if the county, if the city's expecting you to build the whole project and then they would just pay you or how that would work.
Minnella County are good. That's how it was explained. Dick thought the county would have the whole bond.
Okay.
And the city would kick in their portion, correct?
That's how it was originally, how we, how we talked about it. And having said that, uh, with this limit, maybe it should be discussed again and, 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 you know, talk through to see if the city would have separate financing on, on theirs. Tom, how would that work if you have two entities that have, let's say, two bonds? Is that possible or is that?
Yeah, that would be possible. The city could do that. I'm just thinking, kind of thinking through it, the city, the city, well, they could definitely do it. But you are limited to the, to the 90 cents per thousand. So if they were, you know, if you're thinking you were going to build the whole building for them, uh, and then they were just going to pay you for their piece of it, which is fine, that, that would be great. That would help with debt service, whatever, but you're still limited to that dollar amount, that 90 cents per thousand. So even if their amount gives you something under that would, would generate 90 cents per thousand, you still can't bond for anything greater than that 90 cents per thousand. That makes sense?
Is.
We can't use that as an offset.
This is project specific, so it could only be used for the jail? Or I'm, I keep thinking of this, we're stuck. Well, we are, we're stuck with this building and there's a great deal of cost just in bringing it up. So it's safe and healthy. Can some of those funds be used on this building as well as the jail? Or does it have to be separate?
Yeah, it, it doesn't have to be separate. I mean, you could just make that part of the project. Again, it just, it, it takes away money from the actual jail piece of it then. But.
And also it, it would encumber this building then for 30 years, right?
Yeah, yep, that too.
Which we need to take into consideration how much that 90 cents we do on the jail because we still need to do something in.
Right.
And I guess I would just look at it as two separate projects, I guess. I, I, I would try and keep it as clean as possible and do the, kind of the jail, because that's going to have a ground lease. I, I mean, I'm guessing, and I haven't heard, I don't want to step in something here, but I'm assuming the jail is going to be at a different site. So that would be the ground lease for that site. And again, that's kind of the kicker. We can do a ground lease, I mean, we've done multiple ground leases like in Minnella County for different pieces of property. But I would say the cleanness is wherever the jail is going to be, do the ground lease there. And that's pledged to that bond. And if you guys want to do some, you know, a couple million dollars for this building, then, then you could do that under this whole, under seven, you know, 72519 also. And, and, you know, we would have a separate ground lease. And that way, when this gets paid off, then it can be released from the, the overall ground lease. And then when the other jail get, the jail gets paid off, that can be released. And you probably don't want to go 30 years on this money either. You probably want to do something shorter than that. So.
So a question for you with the, with having the city finance a portion of it and the county finance a portion of it. Is one, uh, the primary and one's a secondary? Or how does that work from a bond holder perspective?
I'm still kind of working through my head. Most of them are all, you know, like one person has the lead on it and they do the full financing. And then, and then there's just a lease, kind of, they pay their debt service. Penning County did that for Rapid City. So, yeah, I don't know. We, I'd have to think through that and figure it out if there's be a way to, to specifically get, you know, they're going to have, you're going to have the, county's going to have the overall ground lease. I mean, if the, if the city, and again, I don't want to speak for the city, um, because Mike just, just retired, right? So throw Katie into the fire. But, um, um, I mean, if they had something like sales tax money or something like that, I mean, that'd be easy. Just do a sales tax bond and, and they could finance it. But if they'd be looking at trying to do something like they did for their city hall and do a lease purchase type deal, that makes it kind of muddy.
Would it be, um, from a property perspective, would it essentially create a condominium? So the county would own the jail, the city would own the law enforcement center or some portion of it?
Yeah, it could. I mean, in the end, it could all be owned by the county. If that's the intent, I mean, the documents can be written in such a way that it could all be owned by the county.
Well, I don't think the intent, I think the city's going to own their, their portion.
Oh, okay.
Just like they do now with the law enforcement center.
Oh, okay.
So in the end, they're going to have, this is going to be theirs.
Okay. Well, and that's good. If that's the case, then, I mean, we could definitely, we can, we can ground lease their piece. And if they want to do like they did for the city hall and do some kind of, uh, lease purchase also, then, then we could look at doing something like that for them. Betty, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. So, um, how, how does a trustee get paid and does it reduce the amount of money available for construction?
Right. So the trustee is just, uh, usually it's just an annual fee of about $2,000, $2,000, $2,500 to, to work as your trustee and, uh, hold the funds and manage the funds and make sure that, you know, the contractors are doing what they're supposed to do. And that's paid on an annual basis. So we don't, we don't include that in the upfront costs, except for the initial cost of setting it up. And then the actual trustee fees, um, they'll just bill you annually. So we don't, we don't, you know, put $60,000 in there just for trustee fees. It just becomes an annual expense usually.
Great, thanks.
If we were to go that route, they'd still work with Dick and our builders or?
Yes.
That's, that's still all?
Yes. Well, in, in reality, they'd work, they'd work with, work through Kerry. And then, um, and then Kerry would work with the, with, with Dick.
Okay.
His group. Cause he's going to submit his bills to Kerry and Kerry is going to submit them to the trustee.
I didn't know if the builder went out and got their own construction.
No.
No, that's kind of a black box there. That'd be up to how Dick does his, how he does what he does.
I, I have a question. It gets back to what Phyllis said earlier about the courthouse. Okay, is it possible that, or is it, what you'd want to do is, let's say, we go this route for the jail? Okay, is it possible to take another bond out for the, for the courthouse?
The, well, okay, you said bond. So when I hear bond, I'm thinking of GO bond, general obligation bond, um, election. If you wanted to do that, yes, that, that's outside that 90 cents per thousand.
Okay.
That's what they call an unlimited tax. So you can raise taxes as high as you need to, to pay debt service. And you could do that. You could definitely do that. If you're try, if you're talking about under the lease purchase, under seven, you know, 72119 or 72519, 72116 or 72519, you're, um, you're really limited to that 90 cents per thousand.
Not that I'm interested in doing, I just wanted to know how it works.
Well, no, and that, that goes back to having some kind of margin there where you don't want to necessarily be right at the top. You know, doing 23 million, you want some cushion there in case you need. I mean, you, there's only so much you can do, um, under these two sections of the law. You know, because it stipulates juvenile detention, you know, courthouses, courthouse additions and jails. But still, you, you know, in case something happened, I mean, still got the courthouse. So if something happened, you needed to do something here, you do want some leeway where you could come in and do, you know, use this part of the code to shore up the place or, or remodel, you know, fix whatever might happen.
Okay.
I don't know if you've seen the ad for insurance company where she's sitting at the dinner table and.
Oh, yeah.
The ceiling. I feel that way about that. And that's just one little issue of this building. So it has to be kept in mind. Whatever we do, that work on this building has to happen also.
So which one of these, uh, programs would you suggest is the best?
Well, like I, like I said, the one, the one that we've used, uh, number four, 72519 under that section, you know, basically that gives you, and as I kind of glossed over it, but it's highlighted in there. Basically that gives you the, the authority, the same authority that the, the South Dakota Building Authority has. Meaning, you know, most people think, you know, when South Dakota builds, you guys are in a college town. When they build these buildings over here, they're taking out debt. In reality, South Dakota cannot issue debt. They have no debt outstanding. They do, they go through these, the building authority, they go through the different authorities that they have to issue bonds. And they do that on an annual basis. So that, and what I mean by annual basis, they don't meet, they don't meet that first test on 68, 68B1, what a bond is, because there's no future commitment. It's the buildings are the hook, you know, like if you did, and again, kind of like your building, what, what I've been talking about is that if they don't make payment on them and then they come down here and they wrap yellow tape around it, it won't let you in. So, so the, so the state in that section in 72519 gives you the same authority to enter into a, a, basically a lease to build a building. And, and in essence, it's called sale leaseback, but it's not a traditional sale leaseback because the other language, the state allows for lease purchase. So basically it ends up more or less being like a lease purchase. I mean, we're not looking for a third party company to build this building. It'll just be a trustee, the trustee will build the building for you. You'll, you'll select them as your agent and then they'll build the building for you. And, you know, again, I say that, I mean, they're not the contractor. They just work with the county and who the county hires. The county's given, actually they're, they're made the agent to go out and hire the, hire the architects and hire the folks, all the professionals that are needed to build the building. So they're given that authority.
So, uh, Tom, if we were to summarize this and, and kind of cutting through the bottom line on this, if we did the 72519, that includes a provision of 7251.
Yep, correct.
And, uh, from the county's perspective, at the end of the day, it probably means that it's, um, a 10% higher interest rate. Meaning if it was 2%, it would be 2.2%?
Yeah, well, I would say it'd be like 2.1%. Yeah, yeah, 10, yeah, 10 basis.
10 basis points, okay, on, on that, okay.
Yeah, so I wouldn't say 10%, 10, like you said, 10% would be 2.2. I'd say it'd be more like 2.1.
2.1, okay. So that's a, okay. And then as far as, uh, the county is concerned, um, you know, we'd, we'd involve the, the trustee. But from a, a perspective of just running the project, it really wouldn't be run differently. It doesn't have to be run differently. For example, on the, for Minnella County with the jail expansion.
Yep.
And that was run as a very traditional process. If, if it was, if the money came from a, a GO bond or through the sale leaseback, it, it, it's run the same way from a construction perspective. So the state, same state law in terms of bidding.
Yep.
The same, it's, it's run the same way. It's just public dollars.
Yep.
And this would be the same way the city did the city hall, correct?
In essence, yes. I mean, they have, I mean, they have specific language under city, the city section, which is I think nine in the code that allows them to do lease purchases up to 30 years.
So it would make this, um, a little more complicated in setting up is having two entities, having the city having their financing and, uh, the county having their financing for, you know, let's call it two buildings that are attached. Maybe thinking about it that way. Is that the correct way? I view it legally, it's a, it's a kind of means it's two separate interests.
It's, you know, the, you know, again, the things that are running through my head, I like to just kind of keep it simple and, and, uh, you know, but, you know, the devil's in the details, right? So there would be some details there because again, it's, it's, when you do leases, it's about being able to deny access. So if you have a building, how do you deny access if your building's connected? You know, you know, if it's, you know, like in Minnella County or in Brookings County, I mean, that was like the second and third floor. So we could deny access to the second and third floor of their building if they decided not to pay, um, kind of deal. Here, um, we would have to definitely get a, uh, usually we just do it on property and then the legal descriptions of that property. We'd have to figure out a legal description that fits the piece that the county is going to own and then the piece that the city's going to own. If we can delineate those two things, I don't see an issue. If we can't, then, then, then it muddies the waters.
Can we use cross easements? For example, restrooms, can we have it? So there's, uh, we designed the building, so there's, let's call it a property line between the two. It's not actually a property line, but it's a line of demarcation between the two entities. Can you do easements, cross easements, uh, in terms of like restrooms?
You know, I've never been asked that. I, I would assume so. I mean, easements are, can be part of it, but like I said.
Before, but we haven't had two separate, um, we've had two separate entities, but not using this vehicle financing.
Right.
And then we could use cross easements and.
Cause see the.
Share driveways and so.
Were they going to be similar to what they're doing now? Cause when you walk into the police sheriff station, there's a hallway that separates them with two different accesses. Is that what you're?
Well, I mean, I'm not saying you have to do it. I'm just saying, you know, we'd have to be able to get legal descriptions to be able to, you know, uh, attach a ground lease to those. Now, I don't know if that's why they did that originally.
We've done that. We've, we've had it where you've had, you know, where it's, where it's legal descriptions bought up against each other on two separate, let's call it two separate owners, because technically that's what we have here, right?
Yep.
From the actual, you know, one ground lease, but separate owners.
I hate to think expansion when we're just trying to build. But if the property is appropriate sized and the city owns their portion and they decide they need more, it would, to me, it seems like an easier way that they could add on to their section without bothering the county.
Right.
It would make.
We could design it that way.
Make the future simpler.
Right, yeah.
We'll give them their piece of property that they need, whatever size and for future expansion.
Yeah.
As long as we think about it ahead of time, that shouldn't be a big issue.
Right.
Right.
Who, who owns the property for these 30 years? Is that in, is that still in our name? You said it's the.
Right. The title doesn't change. So it's still in essence your property. So, um, I mean, in the end, in the end, not that I'm trying to get any commissioners to say, hey, we're not going to levy taxes or whatever. Again, under your law, you really can't do that. You can be taken to court. But for like schools or cities, cities mainly, um, if they did like the city hall here, if they decided not to make payment on the bonds, just trying to give an example here. If they decided not to make payment on the bonds, no, no, the land did not, the, the, um, the title did not change hands. So after 30 years, the title would go back to the city. I mean, that bu, building would have sat empty for 30 years and deteriorated. But that, well, you know, if they couldn't have found, found a renter for it. But, um, but in the end, I guess I'm trying to say is that the building's always yours, the property's always yours. So.
So when it was your last, um, meeting, uh, there was a discussion on, uh, bond anticipation notes. And I'd do that as like a construction law, but maybe you could view, maybe you could have some comments on that, Tom.
Right, right, yeah. Dick Linder should.
South Dakota law in terms of how that affects it here.
Right. And, and, and Dick mentioned that. And, and the, yeah, you can do bond anticipation notes, but the idea behind bond anticipation notes is usually when we see those is, it's like a USDA loan or something like that. Something's are, something's already been committed to take out those notes. So, you know, the, if you did say $40 million or whatever, you did bond anticipation notes. I mean, in three years, you would have to have some mechanism in place to, to carry that financing, unless you came up with $40 million in three years to pay those bonds off. So without a GO bond in place before you did bond anticipation notes, if that was the way you were going to do this financing, then, um, you really can't do bond anticipation notes. You wouldn't be able to sell them because the first question from bondholders would be, well, how are they taking out these notes? Who, you know, are we going to be stuck with them at the end? And, and, you know, you guys wouldn't have a way to take out those notes. So that, that really isn't, in my mind, an option unless you have some other kind of, like I said, financing arranged. And if you're going to do that and you do the lease purchase, that's why we don't see them that much in South Dakota. I mean, if you're going to do, um, lease purchase, I mean, you could do bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the lease being done, but why not at two percent interest? Why not lock rates today? And then, you know, that way, you already know what your payments are going to be for the next thirty years as opposed to a bond anticipation notice, you know, you, you, you are open to interest rate risk for the next three years or however long it takes you to construct the building. And then you, then you put in the permanent financing. So that's, that's why we just don't see a lot of bond anticipation notes for, you know, most folks, if they're doing bonds, they just do the bonds upfront, lock the interest rates so they know what their payments are already for the whole project, and then they go out and they construct the building, construct the project.
So with the lease, do we, are we able to lock that interest rate in upfront too?
Yep, yeah. So the day we sell the bonds, which is, we call sell price, and that's the day we set the interest rates, so. And those are set, even though they're, you know, if you've ever seen a municipal security, it's, it's kind of different, a little bit different than a house loan. You get like an average interest rate for a house loan, you know, three, three and a quarter now for thirty years, whatever it is. Interest rates on municipal bonds, they're sold in serials, so you can buy a twenty, a twenty year maturity, and that'll have a different rate than the nineteen year maturity, because it's a year longer, or as opposed to a one year maturity. One year maturities are lower rates, so the rates actually step up as they go further out, you know, because you're going to take more risk taking a thirty year piece than you are if you take a five year piece of that. So, but that's all set, that's all set at the pricing date, at the sale date, so. And then you get, you know, from those individual maturities, you get an average interest rate, and that's where we're, you know, around that, you know, whatever we said last time, I forgot now, but that two percent. Because like I said, I don't think, yeah, you're, yeah, it was around, the, the all inclusive cost was two oh eight. You know, so we're still floating around that two percent for thirty year paper.
And we can go thirty years.
And you can go, under seven, yeah, under seven twenty-five nineteen, you can go thirty years. I thought they changed the law for seven twenty-one, seven twenty-one sixteen one, but I looked yesterday and it still said twenty years max, so, I don't know, I thought they changed that, so I'd have to talk to somebody. But, but again, basically what we've been using is like what we used for the jail up in Minnac County, Brookings County is seven twenty-five nineteen. And, you know, basically the authority that you're given under this statute, which are the same authority, like I said, outlined before, that the building authority is given to, you know, do their building projects.
So if we did that one, we could, if we did the lease, we would opt out.
In essence, it's like an opt out.
Four of the five of us would have to vote in favor of it.
Yes.
And it's referable.
And it's referable.
Okay, yep.
Twenty days after publication in your, in all your legal, I don't know how many you have, probably two newspapers at least, or just one, okay.
So as far as what you've done to date with the work with the hiring the architect, hiring the contractor and so on, we're in conformance with seven twenty-five nineteen, where we do the same thing, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any change in the process if we're going with this direction versus a geo bond.
And I guess in the process, if we, if we didn't, I didn't say it out loud, is basically we put a resolution together, we vet it with the state's attorney and with all the language that, that goes into it, it's really only about a three or four page document, because it is a trust document, or it is a trust relationship, trustee relationship. So most of the documents are drafted up, and those are the larger documents that are done later. The, basically what the resolution does is just says, hey, you're going to enter into a ground lease, you're going to enter into a lease, you're going to enter into it for not to exceed thirty years in this dollar amount, and then some other, you know, some other legal, legal language that goes into it. It only takes about three or four pages, but, but that is the next, that would be the process is, is do that resolution and then, you know.
So Tom, a question on it being that there's another entity involved, the city, would it be a motion that's conditional upon the action of the city?
Well, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I guess, I mean, it can be if you want, but I guess I'm, I mean, I don't want to waffle here and I guess I would just make the motion, make it as clean as you can, and then, and then, you know, if, if, if the, if the city's part of it is integral to your part, then, you know, you guys just aren't going to move it. I mean, in my, in my recollection, you're not going to build a quarter of a building or a half a building or three quarters of a building if it, if it doesn't work, because the city can't do their financing side of it or whatever. But, but then your twenty day starts to run, you know, and you can get past that period, and then we're not, you know, waiting for the city, I guess, to catch up. I don't know, it's just my thought. Because I'm kind of thinking out loud here.
My thought is.
I get in trouble.
We have to move forward with something, whether the city comes along or not. So, I mean, if they come, great, that, I mean, works better for everybody, but I don't think we can wait for them.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to have discussions with them.
I mean, if, I mean, my thought is, and again, if, maybe they were just going to make payments out of their general fund, we can't, we can't just use their general fund to secure a bond for them, that would, that would be too costly. So, you know, I guess I haven't had any discussions with John over there or Mike, so I don't know what they were thinking. I, I assume they were probably just thinking they were going to, you guys are going to build the whole building and they had so much money within their budget that they were going to send you. And, and, and like I said, I don't know if that was out of general fund, if it was, if, if they were thinking they were going to piece a piece of the sales tax together, then, you know, then, you know, that's fine, then they could issue sales tax bonds, and just based on that. But again, if it was just coming out of general fund, I can't just, we, we just can't issue general fund bonds, you know. Minnesota could do that, but we don't have that ability to issue general obligation bonds, you have to have an election, so. So again, have to have that discussion with them to find out what their thought process was, if it was just monies that they had on hand, was it coming out of electric fund? You know, I, I don't know.
So Travis, on your comment that the county needs to do something regardless of what the city has, maybe what I should do is work with the architects and contractor and, and get a, break that out and price it separately, so we know, just to do what the county needs, what is the, the plan with that in terms of the, the cost and schedule and so on?
There were, if I remember correctly, there were a number of, well, in the safety center, better designs so that it was more effective for both.
It was, yeah, we, it would, it wouldn't, we wouldn't just split the baby and have both, both operate fully, because we'd have to have, we had, we had shared lobby, shared restrooms, we had some, you know, common space, shared parking, so there would be, you know, some additional cost the county would incur if you just built that on your own. But we'll figure out what that is.
So our next step is more cost also.
Possibly, yeah.
But we have to know that in order to decide the amount of the ninety cents we can do.
Hopefully, we can talk to the city and they can figure out what they, yea or nay.
But if you, but if Dick gets the numbers for the city, you know, so they'll have an idea of what their proportion completely is, that would certainly help, I think.
Oh, yeah.
And that way, we know what we have too.
Really, it'll break it down into really three numbers, what is it for just the county? And what is the city? If, if it's just, just a jail, just a standalone jail? And then what is it for, for the county if the city joins, and what is it for the city? So kind of, we'll, we'll break that out, so we know, so you know what the difference is. But there will be an upcharge for the county, for the state, the county does it alone.
So your recommendation is just probably get closer to that twenty thousand, twenty million, twenty thousand, twenty million dollar price than it is the twenty-three?
Yeah, I.
For the total project.
Right, I would.
For our per.
Yeah, I would try and.
The city would be separate.
Right.
Of that twenty million. Our portion needs to be around twenty million.
See, I, I guess, I understood it that the whole, that the most we could do for the whole project, including the city, was twenty-three million. That's not correct?
No, no, twenty-three is just what the county can do.
Okay, okay.
I thought, yep. I haven't figured in the, the city part of this.
Okay. Okay, I misunderstood that then.
I'm missing, missing that too.
I thought the total project was twenty-three million, period.
Well, I think total project was twenty-six, right? So with this, with the city, but just what you can do within that ninety cents is twenty, by twenty-three million.
Okay, it'd be so much simpler if the whole project was twenty-three or under, that would.
Right.
Make things so much easier.
Isn't that how that works?
Yes.
But yeah.
But it can be done.
Yes, but it can be done, especially if the city's portion was, you know, six million of that, you know, or whatever. You can get, you can get to the nineteen number and still have some leeway within your ninety cents, which would be nice.
That's where I was.
But you know, we can, we could build the parking lot and have the city do in kind, try and, you know, offset dollars that way. I mean, because they're going to put in the electrical, and they're going to do the utilities, so I mean, there's, there's give and take on what has to be done, especially for, you know, for splitting and drawing property lines.
Because your projection right now, Dick, was for the jail and everything was what, closer to twenty-six, correct?
Twenty-six, yeah, and I think we've got the cost escalation we still, we got to drill into that now with what's going on in the market.
Hopefully, some of the other building costs will follow lumber, what lumber's done in the last month.
Although they did say this morning it's coming down, now, if that's true.
To what new level?
Well, they just said down.
It made a precipitous drop in the last month.
Yes, right.
What's the percentages in the range of?
I've kind of heard a few different things on it, but it's, it's a significant trend to show that it's, it's tipping down. Steel hasn't done that yet.
No.
And that's what we need to drive.
Still, steel's the main thing we're.
Right.
We're dealing with, yeah. By the time we build this, you know, some of the things that are like PVC is way up right now, and that's sort of blamed on the Texas power outage, you know, so, you know, by the time we're actually building this thing, it, that should hopefully solve itself.
Yeah, the rosin plants should be up and running again within a month or two, is what I've heard anyway, from my suppliers. But the deal is, if we could get the interest rate locked in at this now, and the building costs go down, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that's all going to work out that way, but.
Well, locking the interest rates right now, I think everything we're hearing from other clients here from Tom is doing this sooner rather than locking you on it.
Yes. And, and, you know, just, just, and Dick will hopefully back me up on this, it's just, just regular cost. You know, if we're just in a regular year, whatever that is, I mean, you're looking at four and a half to five percent increase in, in cost for building cost. And when you can finance something at two percent, I mean, you're, I mean, you're way ahead of the game. I mean, there's no reason, I mean, there's no reason to just finance it today, even if you didn't build it for two years. I mean, that, you're only at four percent that you've cost you there, and, you know, your cost of construction has gone up five percent, ten percent, so.
And we can do that? We can finance it today and not fail for two years?
You can, you can finance it today, if you could get it built, that, I didn't want to open up a can of worms, but you have, you, but, but you, you do need to know this, so you have, you have, you have actually five years to spend your money, in reality. So, the, three years, you're supposed to, in, when you guys pass a resolution, you're supposed to intend to spend it within three years. So, yeah, you could, you could sit on for two years if you get it all done in a year, in reality. I've never heard anyone go to jail because it took them four years or five years to do a project that they, the S E C didn't come out and find anybody that I know of. Now, after three years, now, this doesn't play a part right now, but I have seen it over my thirty years, after three years, you have to restrict the yield on the funds that you have still in the construction fund that the trustee's holding. And what does that mean? Well, it doesn't mean anything today, because you can't make any money really on those investments of the construction funds, but we have seen over, over the last thirty years, we have seen where short term interest rates are actually higher, the taxable rates are actually higher than what you financed the bonds at. So we have seen where you had to restrict those funds. I mean, two thousand and seven, which wasn't that long ago for some of us, you know, rates were actually higher, short term rates were actually higher than the, than the financing rates. So, yeah, you could earn interest, as much interest as you could on those funds up until year three, but after that, you had to restrict those yield, that yield to whatever the bond yield was, whatever the tax exempt yield was on those bonds. But you have up till five years to spend your money, so. Three years is preferable, and most big building projects are two years. I mean, they, they got the Sioux Falls High School done, and, I mean, that's going to open in the fall. You know, and that was two years, basically two years after they did their financing. I mean, Pennington County, just another ad, I mean, back in two thousand and ten, when we thought rates were even better, or great then, which they were then, but they're even better now. I think they financed around three percent over, three and a quarter percent over thirty years, and they didn't have, they have a, really just, they didn't even have a schematic drawing, they just had a, an architect's estimate of thirty million dollars, and, you know, we financed thirty million dollars. We did ten in one year, ten, I think, in ten, and then, because we wanted to keep it bank qualified, which I talk about a little bit in my thing, you get a little bit better interest rate if you have bank qualified, so we did ten in one year, and then the next year, you know, about four months later, we did another issue for twenty million, the balance of that. But still, you know, in four months, they didn't have any final design schematics or anything like that, they'd barely started. They had to even move an evidence building that the city owns that was on their property, they had to move that. So, I mean, all that happened, and they did all that, you know, they financed it upfront, locked in those low interest rates, and then over the next three, four years, they, they, you know, put the plan together, finished the plan, put the plan together, implemented it and all that. So it's not unheard of. So, anyway.
Thank you.
You bet.
You've been pretty clear now, if I remember it.
If you have any questions, just give me a call. Anybody have anything else? Thanks, Tom. You bet, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me down, guys. You got a piece of this stick, you want me to stick around? Oh, okay, we're good. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Do we have a cost of, other than the balance of what we were figuring of the forty-four, forty-one or whatever, of what it's going to cost for this building?
To remodel this building? You mean, is that what you're asking, or what?
Remodel or renovate, you know, bring it up so it's at least usable and healthy.
One of the challenges we talked about before is in terms of how to do the repairs to this building, an example of what the repair that you're doing right now with tuck pointing. Now, we have the, the number of three hundred and twenty-five, twenty, three hundred and twenty-five thousand in the, in the budget for it, and you're spending, you know, roughly two hundred of that, well, under, under two hundred of that. But that was for doing the basement. Well, doing the basement, you dig out the entire, all the way around the building, and, which means, you know, then it's parking lots, it's, it's, you know, it's a lot, and that's kind of part of a bigger project. So this building is a little bit unique, because this is a hard building to sort of, kind of fix, put Band-Aid solutions on it. That's, that's an example on it, because one project kind of leads to another. Another example of that would be replacing the elevator. The shaft of the, of the elevator is in a condition that's, you know, you basically need to replace the shaft. Well, the shaft also is walls for the adjacent spaces around it. So then, instead of spending a hundred thousand dollars to replace the, the elevator, it's probably, you know, half million or something, because you're redoing the whole walls and everything. And then it gets into the electrical system, which is, you know, it's, it's sort of, it's sort of like trying to, to bring a, you know, a car that was built in, you know, a nineteen, twenty, or, no, nineteen oh four, whatever this building was built in, and, and say, we're going to renovate it for, to meet the, the demands of, of a new car. And like, where do you, you know, it's, it's real hard to divide.
Well, that's, when you mentioned elevator, with redoing the shaft, that's also the run for all the electrical wires from the basement to the other floors, so now we've got to find a place for those, because.
It's, it's definitely one of those things that it's, once you start on it, it's, it's very hard to segment into portions of this renovation. That's the reason it's hard to, to renovate like a house, you can take, you know, you can redo the bathroom, you can redo the kitchen, you can do those things. Here, it's, it's just way more complex than that, because one, one little project ends, ends up being in a much bigger project.
I don't know, I did upstairs, no, I was doing the downstairs bathroom and ended up having to do the upstairs before I could do the downstairs.
So, based off the, based off the numbers we were using previously, without move out numbers, about twelve million in construction costs, right? To upgrade.
And that, you know, includes the, that was taking the solution of doing restrooms and elevators and building in addition for those instead of to repairing the ones you've got, because it would cost more to repair the ones you've got than to, to, you know, just add on addition to it.
Well, yeah, because we need to add, we need to add another bathroom.
Yeah, and to, and to renovate these restrooms is very, very expensive, it's less cost.
Absurd.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That helps, yep.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Dick.
Felt we needed to bring some of that up just to make sure folks are remembering and knowing how much it costs to.
Very good.
Yeah.
Take care of problems.
Anybody have anything on the jail? I mean. Where do we, where do we want to go? What do we want to do?
Well, it looks to me like, I'm just, after listening to Tom. That seven twenty-five nineteen is the way we really want to go at the leaseback.
Simpler.
Simpler. I think it's. I, I don't know what else we can do. I mean, really. So if I understand him right, then it needs sixty percent of the commissioners to. Okay it.
More than sixty, so.
We are, yeah. Right, and then after that, it doesn't necessarily have to go to a vote, right? They gotta actually bring it to a vote.
Right.
Correct.
Correct, so I mean.
Carrie, just say that we're, we're to get referred, just, would it make the October ballot?
I think for a referendum, there's a sixty-day timeframe.
Has to be done in sixty days.
I think so.
So. October, what, eighth is the date, so August eighth. I'd be put, well, it could make it if, then that's how quick, that depends on how quickly we act.
Yeah, they have twenty days, I think, to get the petition signatures.
We need to actually. Get the numbers back from Dick.
Yeah, we need the numbers to know what we're asking.
Know what's going on.
Correct.
And then I think.
So it would have to just be another special election if it was referred.
Yeah, I'm afraid so.
Those, those steps are gonna eat up too much time for us, I think.
And I guess. I really don't want to be on the same dollar with, with the school, not completely.
I was just thinking if it got referred.
Right, right, right.
Just to try and save that.
Right.
Forty thousand or whatever it costs.
Right, that's the bad part. Yeah.
The only thing is, and I said it, I said it last meeting too, I think that, you know, if you get two of these bond type of issues on one ballot.
Yeah.
I think both are gonna fail.
Gets kind of ugly.
So there's no, we wouldn't make it anyway. It wouldn't, it wouldn't happen.
Coming from a very positive viewpoint, there are many on the no vote. That were in support of the jail. If they were to bring this to a referendum, that's basically saying close down the county. So I. That, that's a negative way of saying, I, I believe it will not be taken to referendum if we are. And treated what rationally and well, and say exactly what the costs are being used for.
So I would agree with you.
Yeah, I agree too. I mean, I, 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 I think, um, you know, in terms of timing. Um, this, this is what makes sense, and in terms of the, you know, the problems that we're facing in. Um, the short term and the long term, um, it's, it's the way to go.
So we wait for numbers and work with the city.
The property, how quick do we want to?
Property.
That's something we need to move on.
Right.
What was the feeling of across from Ace Hardware? How?
Too small.
Is it too small?
For, for future. And of the, well, it was borderline, but by the time they bought the lamplighter for what he wanted and all these other little businesses.
Do you need the lamplighter? That was my question. You've got the whole back all the way across.
If you're looking for future expansion, they didn't want to build and then block us in again. It was, it was getting to be expensive.
And you had four different owners, correct?
At least.
At least.
Yeah, I was eliminating the Cherry Street because I feel that would be a problem even with going in and out. But.
How much space did we have without the lamplighter? I know that was split out when we talked about it the last meeting.
Was it five, five point seven?
I think I got it.
I think that's, that's what I remembered.
But I don't remember if that was with or without.
I think it was with. The lamplighter was the five point seven. I think without it was something in the range of over four.
Oh, I think you're right, Dick.
I think that's right.
I thought it was much larger. It looks larger.
I, I wrote it down, and I wrote down five point four acres, including, um, you know, the laundromat hotel and Paul's Plumbing.
But then that also left out a chunk that Larry Brady owns. He won't sell.
That would be the laundromat in that area, isn't it?
Is that what he?
In between the laundry.
Yeah, but five point four acres is, I, I think, too small. Um, and, uh, you know, the location is. Awkward at best.
Agreed. I don't know about the awkward, but definitely it's too small. So the. And as far as options, Larry Brady, and then.
So we had.
Are you looking at across from?
The, the, the committee recommended us to look at three, possibly four. You had talked to Nate, the one by Runnings.
And that's too small?
Too, well, and it's a hard no. Because they were talking the building too.
Right.
The biotest or bioplasm is that?
Oh, yeah.
You know, taking the building also and buy. And that was a hard no. Um, Larry's across from the old Campbell's. Uh, the Munger property to the, directly to the west of Polaris.
Find out if that was sold or still available or?
Yeah, and I haven't got a hold of him yet. And then the one across the bypass north of Walmart on Prentis.
That's the biggest piece, right? That's the thirty-eight acres, because Munger's is thirty-two.
Is Munger's thirty-two or is it thirty?
I got thirty-two written.
Okay.
It's the one across thirty-eight, okay.
Yeah.
Then it's Munger's thirty-two.
That's the one that's basically a lake. Or wet.
It's wet on the west, east side.
Kathy Marmet's piece came up too that night, but that is a lake.
Uh, yeah.
You know, they're about to call off course.
Okay.
Across from the golf course.
Crawford and Main.
Armstrong.
Oh, that's what I thought you were talking about. Okay.
No, no. We're, we're talking about thirty-eight across the bypass. Is that what you were thinking?
Okay.
Oh. Which one did you think was a lake?
The Crawford Road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a good year to sell it.
True. So thirty-eight acres is across the bypass?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Directly north of, of Walmart.
Oh.
You know, where Siler's additions at, that housing development.
Yeah.
Right, right to the south of them, right between them and Walmart. There's a piece of property.
I had it much further east.
So I guess we move, try to move on one of those properties and see where we get. You've actually. Contacted him, but nobody's got back to you yet.
Yeah, Larry hasn't gotten back to me yet, and I haven't, I haven't heard back from Munger yet.
That's our. It's kind of our next step, next step, basically.
Travis. Yes, Lane. Um, the Munger, um, I know the house just sold. Did that include? Do you know, did that include on the south side of the bypass or just the land on the north side?
Just forty acres on the north side. Wherever that house sat. I don't know. I don't know how they took the forty acres out either.
Okay.
They cut up, uh, that forty acres into three lots. Um, it's gonna be on the next planning, it's on the next planning commission agenda, applied for that.
So did they go up against nineteen or is it farther out into the field?
Up against nineteen, I literally just, they dropped it off. Uh, here, look. Yeah, it's up against nineteen on the east side.
Okay.
And it's kind of starts going north from the driveway, a quarter mile up from nineteen, if that makes sense.
Yep. That's what I thought it would have been, but I wasn't hundred percent sure.
Kind of takes that bluff.
Yeah, it takes both, it takes the one looking over the river and to the west.
Right.
And to the east, there's a bluff there too, I guess.
Yeah, I guess all three.
Will, I wish Lex, Sam's gonna know the answer. We wait for Lexi. We're probably gonna have to have a special meeting to figure this land out and then move on it. We're gonna have to get something done. And Lexi needs to be available.
Yeah. Your, your timing is, well, it'll be all right. I can, I can get on with Zoom if.
Can we even schedule without? Some of these people take longer to get ahold of you than others.
Shouldn't, shouldn't be a long time.
Do a consensus of how much information we have and then call a meeting.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, sure, we can send out the information. I hope. Is that what you're, the information that's?
I'm saying if we say we're having a meeting next week. On, will we have all the information we need for a meeting we're calling special?
I think so.
I won't be here the Friday night. That's the day I have my operation, so I will not be.
I, I would also chime in, and Lexi has a jury trial next week, so she's also not available next week.
Good. So all we're looking, looking back to hear back from Munger and Larry.
Right.
So if I heard back from them, we could, we could even have a meeting this weekend. Like Friday.
Or Monday at the latest.
Lexi's gone all.
Oh, geez.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Unless we were gonna have an early or a late, you know, like a five, a night meeting.
Friday will work for me. Thursday does not at night.
Will you be zooming in, Betty, if it's Friday or are you back?
Yeah, no, I'm back Sunday, so I would be zooming in on Friday. Um.
If Friday works for me, if, if we, if I can get the information, I'll have to let, let everyone know.
Yeah, you can make it Friday, right?
With that, we are not providing any public comment. Saying. And what kind of, I guess I'm going, what kind of commit, if you make a recommendation. What kind of commitment are we making on Friday?
Well, I don't know. We'll have to let, ask Lexi what we can commit to.
Okay.
Sam, do you know, is any of this information that we can discuss in executive session? So these numbers aren't made public right away?
I'll be honest, Travis, I had to step out for a little bit, so I'm not sure. How much of the meeting that I missed while you're talking about right now, um.
Yeah, so I think, um, the question Samantha is, um, whether, uh, land negotiations. Uh, and discussion of land is, uh, um. Uh, negotiations, uh, is, uh, public or private? Can, can there be an executive session? I would assume that if we're negotiating about a land contract, it could be, um, executive set or should be executive session.
I would tentatively say yes. I agree with that as well, um, but I would certainly defer to Lexi, and I can ask her as soon as she's done with court today. She would, of course, be the authority on the executive session, so I don't want to misspeak.
I, I do know the last time we talked about a land acquisition. Um, that was when Teddy was state's attorney, that we, she didn't know how we were gonna do that. I told her to figure out a way, because.
Well, we have, we go to executive session to do it for. Chamber.
A contractual matter?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a contractual.
But I think that's where it fits, and it's in the public interest for us to negotiate as good a deal as we can. And we can't do that in public.
Right.
Correct.
I agree. I mean, I'm just telling you what Teddy had said last time.
No, but, but, yes, we need to, we need to have a decision from legal for, for that, to be sure. But we can go ahead and schedule, I suppose, right?
Yeah, I mean. Do we schedule a meeting for Friday or? Everybody just plan on Friday. More, what, what part of the morning do you want?
Nine thirty.
Doesn't matter to me. It can be, it's fine.
That's fine. I don't care.
I just need to post it twenty-four hours ahead, so I just need to know by Thursday morning.
Just post it.
And we would need Lexi, right? So.
Yes.
Um, Lexi is not gonna be available Friday morning, so if there are things that you know ahead of time, exact questions. You'll need answers from her. I will do my best to get those answers and make myself available Friday morning. But she's in witness prep all morning Friday. Trial starts Monday.
So what about Friday afternoon?
There's nothing scheduled Friday afternoon. But that, I, I don't know for sure if she has other things that just aren't on our office calendar. But I know for sure eight to noon on Friday, she's not available.
Okay.
Or Thursday afternoon.
I'm not available Thursday afternoon.
You're not available.
Well, then we can get our questions answered from her earlier.
Yeah, and.
Of what we.
Yeah, and I would say that's best because Thursday we have court all morning, and then she's got witnesses scheduled all afternoon. So I think the best bet is gonna be let her know questions, her or I know questions ahead of time. And I will do my best to touch base with her whenever I can to get those answers and then. Present them on Friday.
Okay.
I know that's not best case scenario, but it's kind of all we have at the moment.
That'll work. Are you available at all, Sam?
On Friday, yes. Yep.
And late afternoon could work.
And, yep, and Thursday afternoon too. Just the morning I'm not.
You're not available Thursday morning?
Yeah, we have court, so, uh, that would be my only tie-up Thursday, but in the afternoon I can be available.
Friday is probably gonna work better anyhow, because you gotta get an opportunity to get back from Munger and, right, you know, if you, if you. If you don't hear back by, by Friday, we just will cancel out, because it's not much to have a discussion if we don't know.
And I'll go see Larry again today.
Okay.
To see where is that.
But the big, you know, the big question for, for Sam would be basically if we can do it in executive session.
Yeah, so, um, I, I just, uh, looked up, it's SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Um, and one of the exceptions, um, to the open meetings law is, um, uh, discussion of contractual. discussion of contractual matters and I assume that a, a contract of sale for a building would be one of them. But I, that's for Lexi to decide.
And I will certainly touch base with her on that specifically today, once she's done with court.
Sounds good, I don't know what else other question we really have.
None right now, that'd be the only one.
Right, there'll probably some come up.
Oh yeah, but hopefully Sam's available Friday morning and.
Yeah.
Then we can. Go from there.
Okay.
So, anything else?
Time, time then? Which time?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, okay.
So I know Shane's been wanting to weigh in on all of this jail stuff, he's been sitting there patiently.
Yes, thanks, thank you very much, appreciate it.
So we'll, we'll go to Clay County Park discussion. So like, who wants to start with that?
Well, I, I, you know, I have some questions based on discussions that Dick and I had where we basically interpreted the commission's actions differently. And so the first question is, who will have oversight over the park? Dick's opinion, as he stated it to me, was that the association is still what supervising the management of the park? And my understanding had been that the commission with the advisory board would supervise the management of the park. And so I think before that advisory board even meets, we need to have some clarity on, you know, exactly what we meant by ending, ending the lease. Obviously it would, in my mind, it's very awkward to have an association that has no right to the land, doesn't have a lease to be superintending the park, but you know, that's, that's for the commission to, to discuss and decide.
Way in, Dick, or? Well, you know, what I was thinking is that, that the commission can have whatever oversight that it wants, you know, we could, we, we could ask that we have a, a report every commission meeting. From the, the parks board itself, just ends up being a lot simpler, because to continue the way we are operating for, at least for this year. We don't have to make all these other arrangements that Betty listed in, in the email. That we can, we can continue operating the way we are, work towards fixing any problems that we have. And, and my thought was is that we canceled the lease, but, but we're gonna continue to operate, have the association operate as, as is and then evaluate that whether we wanted to continue in that relationship going forward. That was my understanding. It wasn't that they were going to administer the park directly, including financial arrangements and all that good stuff. Directly. And I don't see where the association would even have a. A part in that at that point.
But the end result, I mean, are we all in agreement that the end result is to get the park board back in charge? At some point, I mean. That's.
Yeah.
We write the lease and make sure they're back in charge, once things are cleared up.
Yeah, I think that's.
Agreed with that.
Ultimately, that's what we wanna do and, and along the way, how do we decide whether this, this, the parks board is conducting the operations of the park and, and everything to do with the park in their interim without, without having something to judge.
Yeah, I think, I think working with them is going to be the easiest way to get them back in, in control of it.
Mm hmm.
Instead of completely.
And there's.
You know, completely wiping them out.
Sure, there's relatively little risk to that too, I think, you know, that the chances of, of of having bad, bad things occur going forward would be mainly due to a lack of trust back and forth between us and the parks board, you know, because actually our actions would erode trust in us from them also. So.
In, in the event that the association were to run it, they would need some legal basis for doing that. Because right now they, they have, they don't have that. So, you know, and that would be something that I would ask the state's attorney about. So can we allow a private association to collect fees on land to which, which they don't control and have no right to, unless we have a contract or they have a lease that allows them to control the land. So, you know, I mean, I think we're asking for trouble if, you know, we just say, okay, fine, just keep running it the way you always have, and although I agree that that's much simpler. You know, then we of course lose what we were looking for, which is oversight. You know, and, and you know, there's, there's gotta be a contract, there has to be some legal basis for the county to, to, to do that. And I, I, I think we're all on the same page in terms of, you know, reorganizing this in, you know, maybe a, a, a more responsive way. But we are, you know, I, I, I think just saying, oh yeah, okay, so we pulled your lease, you don't control the land, but you can still run everything, I mean, that, that, that's, that's legally problematic.
And that's why we would probably jump the gun by pulling the lease the way we did, instead of saying, hey, we're not happy with the things are working. We, we reserve the right to pull the re, lease on at any time and continually get on in a month by month basis. You're, you're on notice. And we would retain that legal, if we, if we more or less just said we were gonna go ahead of the lease on a month by month basis. That would put them on notice, but also give us the, that legal structure that Betty has talked about. And the, give us some legal immunity, because they're the ones that are running the park, not us.
But this is how we run the, the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Um, there's no lease with the fair board. We have the lease, just like we currently would come July second with the park board.
Sure.
We have the oversight. Yeah, we're allowing the same people, I guess, to, to run the park. But we're, in the meantime, we're rewriting the bylaws. And they're writing the rules of what what the duties of staff are and conduct. And I think that's what we want, and that's.
Right.
We wanted the people who were gonna eventually be running this to, to do that, to put those rules in place and their bylaws. Because they're the ones mostly involved with it and, and if there's really any concern, I would think. I mean, between Betty and Dick, they're both on the board. You guys should have firsthand knowledge of, if something's going down the wrong path. Where we could step in and go, no, we're not doing that. At any time, we could step in and take complete control of the expenses, cause most of the income is gone, or I mean, it's already been acquired by the park board who would have no. What's the word you wanna say to, to transfer that, those funds to us? I think it's best to just work with them through this transition. And, and get them back to where they need to be.
Mm hmm.
And so then the, the sort of, um.
And she's gone.
Oh no.
Yeah. She's connecting.
Trying her on phone. Carrie.
There we go.
Okay. Can you hear us, Betty?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can see and hear you now, we lost you as you started talking.
Okay, so I want to clarify that, that the association will continue to operate the park and oversight and that the role of the commission's advisory board will be simply to rewrite the, the bylaws and create policies and procedures moving forward. Does that?
Yeah, that's, that's how I see it.
Okay, and then, then the next.
Advisory board has input from the board.
I'm.
Which board? The advisory board is five of.
The association.
So the advisory board is, it was taken from the board.
The new board.
From the new board, there's fourteen on the board, correct Betty, there's fourteen members?
Yep, there's fourteen members exactly right now.
So of those fourteen, they took five or seven of those and they're the advisory.
Okay.
To rewrite bylaws and, and rules for the park.
And, and one of the goals is to reduce the size of the, the association board itself, because pretty much everyone understands that that's pretty unwieldy. Sometimes with volunteer boards, you, you get more volunteer action by having a big board. But each of them are often expected to pitch in to the operation of whatever the, the enterprise is doing. But for our purposes here, it's unwieldy.
And Lane made a good point on the board also, he, he, he thought if you were gonna be on the board, that you had to volunteer a certain amount of time at the park.
And now is the staff still on the board?
Yes.
They are, okay, so.
But that's something that, you know, basically the bylaws allow right now. And, you know, one of the things the bylaws lacks is a conflict of interest statement. And some conflict of interest statement is required by the IRS to retain five oh one C three status. And I, I, but I, I also wanna say that I, I, I think it's really important that the state's attorney take a look at this and, and kind of sign off on it. It does cause me some concern to have an entity, you know, running things that doesn't have a lease or any legal document in place that articulates, for example, you know, the lease required that they keep insurance, liability and workers' compensation insurance. There's no requirement that they do that, you know, in the present situation. I mean, I think being a prudent board, you'd hope that they would, but, but we lose, you know, we have no control whatsoever about what, you know, the, the terms and conditions under which they use the land. You know, the prior lease gave us a lot of control, it required that they use it for, you know, the, the, the good of the public, that they make it available to the public, that they keep liability insurance, that they own all the liability. If, you know, at this point in time, we own the liability, not the association. Unless, well, because unless we have a contract, we, we are liable, the full faith and credit of county taxpayers is liable. And we could be sued and we would have to pay.
But the fairgrounds operates the same way we're going to operate the park right now. And they can, they carry their own liability insurance. We don't have a contract with them.
Yeah, so that may be true, but.
Does carry liability insurance now, we pay.
And so does.
Insurance thirteen hundred dollars a year for that.
But hopefully, since you're both on the board. You're gonna have the ability to tell the board, we need to keep operating this way if we want the park back, you know, if they wanna have control of the park that way. I don't wanna have control of the park.
No.
I think it's just one less thing we need to worry about.
I think we can't afford to run that park. I think that if, if the county took over the park, we would probably ask the state to take it back. I've done a lot of the numbers here and I, with a few of the thoughts that I've had back and forth with Shane, that the costs will go up quite a bit. We would, we would have to invest way more than the seventeen thousand a year crop, crop payments in order to run this place.
Yeah, I, I would, I would love, love to hear from, from, from Shane too. You know, I think he's made the effort to come to the meeting and, you know, he's, I think he's got a good sense of what the questions are at issue and he may or may not have an opinion on them, but I, I, I'd like to hear his, his perspective.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to ask specifically, if the county is operating it directly going forward without the lease. How comfortable are you with your lease to the county?
Good morning. Can you guys hear me all right? Okay. I think, you know, we'd be pretty comfortable with the county taking it over temporarily. Or, you know, running it with the board through an advisory council or committee. I think that would be a good option, because we still have, you know, some of the board members acting in their capacity in the park. We're in the middle of camping season, so we got a couple of months left. You know, I think that would be in the best interest to get through this year. The financial part of it. I know it was mentioned to maybe run that through the, the treasurer's office, and I think that would probably be a good idea, just to have the checks and balances there. Without a lease in hand to just make sure, I mean, they could get the deposits ready and then run it through the treasurer if that, that would work. But I think it can be done, we can make it through these last couple of months, then get, get the bylaws rewritten. Have a chance to reorganize the board. The board is a good thing to alleviate a lot of the duties that you guys would have to take over. Or, you know, if it was decided that the state would take it over, which we would do if we had to. But that isn't our, our first choice, we like, you know, having that operation through the board. But I think it's a good possibility, we, we get reorganized here. Then you guys have that new lease and could get that and set in motion and we could be on our way, we got some new good board members coming in that are willing to put some time in and, and work towards a good plan to operate the park.
Do we have a legal right to? It gets very confusing to me of if you have a nonprofit that is owning or operating and taking care of everything. But all the funds are coming into the county, why should the nonprofit even exist? I, I agree, I believe the fund should stay through the nonprofit. I think we should have monthly reporting.
Yeah, so Phyllis, I think we're talking about two different.
Excuse me, still talking.
Let her, Phil says finish your thought.
By bringing it into the treasurer's office, you're making more expense to the county. And giving less responsibility to your operator and yet you're asking them to. and yet you're asking them to take on a lot more restrictions or more rules, which should be in place, but yeah, gotten lax, obviously. I think it would be completely disruptive to bring the accounting into the county and then you've got a nonprofit over here with no funds. You've got, they've got to come through the whole county process to get anything done. It would just overcomplicate the whole system.
Betty?
Yeah, so I think we're talking about two different models here and the one that makes, you know, legally the most sense is not the most convenient one, right? So if we don't have a lease and we don't have a contract with the association, on what basis are we allowing them to control the land and to accept payment for use of the land? You know, I think it's, it really is a problem and it doesn't solve the, the basic problem that brought us to this point. You know, we, we still have all, all the problems we had when we started out this discussion a month or so ago. The other alternative is the one that Shane discussed, which is the park advisory board taking charge and I agree it's messy and I, you know, like, and I laid out those questions as questions that we would have to answer in order, in order to do that. But I, you know, I have to say that if a private nonprofit association that has no formal legal relationship with the county is allowed to control and use and rent out the land, the county will be liable for anything, anything that happens. The fact that the association has liability insurance doesn't relieve the county from the liability unless it has a formal relationship either via a lease that specifies that liability belongs to them or, you know, we, we carry our own, you know, we inform our insurer that we have, we have liability issues that need to be addressed before July one. You know, the, the fact that the association has, has liability insurance does not affect our liability if, you know, we don't have a formal contract of some sort that transfers liability to them. And if we want to take on the liability, then, you know, that's, that's our, that's our decision as a county to make, but I don't think that that is a wise choice.
I'm going to make a motion that we provide a temporary lease to the park board for six months while we iron out all of the legal problems and other issues involved.
Yeah, I think we've got way too much on our plate going forward with transferring everything, you know, taking over those responsibilities ourselves. We've got, it's not too much on our plate with courthouse and all that other good stuff, too much on our plate to try to run this without the, what we have at the park.
Do we have a second for?
I would second it.
And as far as operating as business as usual and how we got to this point, those issues are being addressed hopefully by the advisory committee. I mean, that's, that's their job. That's what they've been tasked to do.
Their job was mainly to redo these bylaws and policies and procedures at this point and then report those back to the, to the board. The board itself is one that's really responsible for enacting those changes and then seeing to it that those are lived up to.
As well, as well as the park rules.
Correct. And then operating rules. We got the new rules posted, Sean, last week. So those rules are, are posted on site. They did a nice job. Great sign that's out there.
Well, I guess I meant with responsibilities of staff.
Correct.
And, and things like that, making sure there's no tiki bars and smokers and.
Yep, those are gone.
Those things have to, are going to be addressed. I mean, that's, that's the whole point of, we figured that could be done by January.
Yeah.
And they'd have new bylaws in place. Then they'd reorganize and they would have the whole thing back to themselves, so.
We would have a new streamlined board, essentially.
I'm, I'm wanting to work on good faith here with them to, to get back to where they need to be.
And I think that's an important phrase too, in good faith. And we need to demand good faith from, from those that are doing the operation also.
Yep, because we still have the ability to say, nope, I guess we're going to have to do this. I don't want to do that. And they don't want to have that happen. I mean, they want to be able to run it the way they, it should be run.
Yes.
I mean, they're the ones that use it all the time and are involved with it. I think they're the perfect people to write those bylaws and, and rules and expectations. So, and I think they'll get it done.
Yeah, we have, having Lane and Paul Peterson on, on that advisory board are important components here, in my, in my opinion.
And, and they're going to run those bylaws and rules past us also.
Oh, sure.
So, I mean, we're, we're still going to have.
My understanding is that both the association board and this commission need to approve those bylaws and rules and amend as necessary.
Yeah.
Now, Phyllis's motion, I would almost tighten that a little bit and say that the lease would continue on a month by month basis for the next six months. Would that be, how do we do that one? Is it just renewed automatically?
Awfully restricted.
Yeah.
Well, it actually.
One at a time.
That's the way our long-term lease had been up to July first was, it was written as a month-by-month lease.
True.
Cancelled both with a month's notice from either party. And continuing on that basis, I think is what would be.
So instead of saying it month by month, we'll just put, there's a lease with thirty days' notice?
Yeah.
You know, that way again?
Have those same teeth that we had in the old lease. And it, we were able to cancel it all out in thirty days' notice, so here we are.
And I don't think it's, I don't see this being a problem.
I will accept that change.
I'll second that change. I have one question.
Okay.
How long is the camping season left on the camping season?
Through October roughly, right?
Yeah, through the end of October then. My calc, I did some calculations on it and I assumed that it would be, really this year was abbreviated. It really didn't start until about May fourteenth, because with all the reservation issues and questions and things, they were not able to really start a reservation system at all until that point. And, and I calculated it'd be May fourteenth through October seventeenth would be this year's season, which ends up being using, using weekend calculations, there's really forty-six nights, weekend nights that are available and for three, three-day weekends, there would be, if there had all of those, it would be sixty-nine nights available.
What about Halloween? Don't they have some big?
Yeah, that, that includes that Halloween bit. So the truth lies somewhere between there. You end up with, most weekend campers come for two nights. On holiday weekends, they end up with three nights and there'll be others that are, want to stay for a whole week. And I, I figured that, figuring it all in, that a true camping season would, this year, would involve about fifty-four nights. And I don't know if you guys have calculated those things out at the state level, but that's the numbers that I came up with. And then I figured that if we had a hundred percent occupancy on two-night weekends for the whole season and nothing else, that would end up being an income of fifty thousand, six hundred dollars. Over last year, that'd be about nine thousand dollars additional that if we hired other managers and other people, you know, we'd, we'd be way short money-wise. Assuming full occupancy.
So where are we at on Bonfire then? Is that set up yet?
No, no, we've been, we were put on hold for that.
Are we gonna do it? Are they gonna do it?
Well, we've had discussions. Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, my suggestion on that is, you know, we're being in the middle of camping season right now, that this be part of the future plan to start next year when you get a park opening date, you know, ninety days before, that would be the first time you take reservations, so that'd give you some time to get that planned. Have somebody operating it probably other than the management. So you have a, like, we talked about a call center or something that they could go to that if they couldn't get online to do it, that they could call, having that backup set up, you know, where it'd be a twenty-four hour deal. But I think that would be the best, my suggestion, to start now when you got people staying in the park and, and having to start from scratch. It's kind of hard, you know, with the, it's a live system, so. But getting prepared for it and having everybody trained up, so everybody's on the same page for next year would be a good thing, I think.
Yeah, we have three and a half months left essentially and Bonfire will do month contracts, month-by-month contracts. So, you know, the advantage of going ahead with Bonfire is that we get to try it out during that interim. And with the training we've already had, we could probably start right away in time for the July fourth weekend, but the campground's all reserved already for that already. Everybody's, it's all booked up for this next weekend and the weekend after that for sure. I checked in last night actually to check on that. That would be the advantage of going ahead with the Bonfire. But we could go either way. The only, the only reason to go, well, one of the better reasons to go ahead with Bonfire would be to have this year be training wheels, that we would use that and find its advantages and disadvantages and see if we would want to go, go ahead later on. I don't really see the liability there, the internal control problems, because all reservations are made pretty much online through Bonfire and the proceeds are deposited directly into the park's bank, banking account. So there's no, really no opportunity for collusion or misappropriation or what have you that goes into there. So there's a, there is a, I'd say paper trail, it's not paper trails, electronic deal. And if there's problems with the system, it would be because of problems that were created by Bonfire, I think.
Does the, actually, should we have a vote on?
Yeah.
Well, we're still discussing.
Okay.
So, so.
Does Bonfire send out a daily report to the management?
I think it's set up so that you can ask for, you know, you can go in and check and see where you're at. From, from our point of view, you know, we can, we can go into Bonfire and see what they have booked.
There's the management, I mean, whoever's at the campground needs to know who's there.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I went to the training that they had at the chamber when we had the Bonfire training and you can print out reports. You can see a live system. You know, if you make a reservation there in the campground, that's, it's all live. So anything that's put in there, whoever registers the site first gets it, but you can get a roster for the campground. It was, it was a pretty good workable system, I thought, pretty similar to what we have.
So anytime Betty or I could check in to make sure things were on the up and up.
Yeah, you'd have a password to check that and, and be able to get in just like they are.
Yeah, so the issue, the issue as I see it, you know, in terms of controlling the account is that, you know, the treasurer really needs to control, I think, in my opinion, the treasurer of the association needs to control the account. And I guess the reason is because whoever controls that account and sets it up has the opportunity to take campsites offline to give other people or certain people priority access to, to sites. And that has basically been, been the problem, right? I mean, the, the problem has been that we haven't had a full and fair reservation system, which is why Travis was getting the phone calls and Carrie was getting the phone calls and the VCDC was getting the phone calls. And so, you know, I think it is problematic to give control of the entire reservation system to, and it's unnecessary, right, to the campground managers. I think the campground managers, as Shane said, can easily download information every day as to who has a right to camp there. And it, it does make, and the, I mean, the reason Bonfire is set up the way it is, right, is for internal control purposes so that somebody who's managing a campground cannot, you know, for example, you know, give free spots on the side by disabling access to, to certain campsites. You know, can't accept cash for campsites by taking them offline and so on. So the internal control was built by Bonfire into the system. And, you know, you, basically what, what you do is, is destroy that by not separating duties, right? So the essential duty of camp management is to make sure that the list of people on Bonfire that they access every day is the same as the people in camp spots. But once you give park management control over which spots are open and which spots are closed, you know, you, you, you're, and I don't know, maybe, maybe Shane wants to speak to that as well. Bonfire is set up pretty much the way the park, state park management sets up their campsites and maybe he has some insight into why those duties are separated.
Yeah, there, there is some times, you know, where you have to make some adjustments. Something happens to a camper and you might have to credit him one site. There are those opportunities to do that. And you can have a site for free if you want to. Say you got some volunteers coming in, so that can be done. That would be a chance for favoritism if, if you were doing anything like that. But you could count the number of the occupancy versus the rate to check that, to see what's going on.
And I've been doing that.
Yeah, so that's one way.
That's one of the reasons, that's one of the ways I've burrowed into the accounting system.
Okay.
How would they, how would they be able to pull sites off that aren't, you know, and save them for somebody else?
Well, they wouldn't pull them off necessarily. They could place a hold on the site. For instance, we have a maintenance hold on, on our site that we, we put on if we're going to do some work on an area or do some tree work. So you could take one offline that way to hold it for a while if you wanted to. But they would never pull them off the, your list that you start with would always be on there, this number of campsites you had.
So they wouldn't be able to hold them for, for friends, because if they pulled it off for maintenance.
I know there's been a lot of accusations of that.
What's that, Dick?
I, I know there have been a lot of accusations of that going on. I think there's, it has occurred to an extent, but probably at less of an extent, I, and using the roster that we, we all got to look at a while back, it's fairly easy to keep track of the available sites and they are keeping all of the, the envelopes. Each site, as it's rented for whatever number of nights, there is an envelope that's, that's filled out. It's the envelope that's been furnished by Game Fish and Parks, the, the perks department. And I almost brought a stack of envelopes today just to establish that for sure, that you all could see that that level of accountant, accounting and accountability is, hasn't always been taken care of. But I think our March meeting, I. Hasn't always been taken care of, but I think our March meeting, I, I brought that up and, and. Told the assembled board that those envelopes have to be saved. We need to keep them for at least throughout the season and it'd be preferable to keep them for two or three years.
Bonfire will help us get rid of those envelopes, right? Since everything's got to be done online?
Well, it's done online, but when you come and check in, you should check, you should fill out an envelope anyway.
If it's done through the system, what you could do is I, I gave them some camping cards too. Where they could fill out the information on that and put it on the post. Because you always want, you know, somebody after hours, say if the sheriff's department came in, wanted to know who was on that site, they had some issues, they could pull that card and see the name on there. That's what we do in our parks. And then it has a departure date. So people coming in there can see how long people are staying and know when the site's going to open up, those type of things.
And that's why management should have access to Bonfire also, correct?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
I mean, they can't change and, and hold sites, you know, if. Just say if, if I, if I was running the park and all of a sudden ten sites got run on my credit card. You'd question why all of a sudden I'm holding, you know, you're pretty much holding ten sites.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, there's got to, you're gonna have to explain.
There's only twenty-nine available, you know?
Well, but you get what I'm saying. If I'm, if I run ten sites through my credit card.
Yeah.
And they're not family.
Yeah, well, you just, you just committed to paying for those two upfront with a credit card. And most folks aren't going to feel like they've got that deep of pockets that they just give that away.
Right.
And you can cancel, you can cancel and get your money back, but right now they, the way they were operating, that if you cancel in less than twenty-four hours, you don't get your money back. If you cancel more than forty-eight hours, you can get the money back then. And in between, you know, there'll be, argue about it. Is there a good reason for this?
Yeah, if I may, I, I, I think, you know, the, 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 the problem is that, you know, if. Camp management controls Bonfire, they can, for example, you know. Reserve sites for friends and family. They can, they can basically mimic exactly what the problems are now. And it's such a simple change to make that somebody else sets up the site. Other than, you know, and, and, and has the passwords and so on, you know, other than the camp management. And to me, that seems really, really critical if we want full and fair access of all the citizens of Clay County to those sites. Essentially, what you're doing is you are, you know, the expression is paving cow paths, right? You're electronically instituting the system that we have now, and I don't want to do that. I, I don't want to reinstitute the system we have now with a fancy Bonfire veneer. That, you know, when, when, in fact, that system can be used exactly the way the current system is being used unless we separate duties. I, I don't know how to make it any more, any more clear.
But Betty, how would they reserve sites without paying for them?
Well, they wouldn't.
On Bonfire, because they'd have to be reserved on Bonfire and paid for immediately.
Yep, they wouldn't have to do that. What they would be able to do is open certain sites, let people know that those sites were open. Allow them to, you know, to, to sign on, say, you know, make it a certain time of day, a certain day of the week. And they, they could all sign, sign on and pay with the credit card and so on, and then all the sites would be released to the public. There's a lot of flexibility in Bonfire for all the reasons that Shane mentioned. You know, there's flexibility in Bonfire so that, you know, if a site needs maintenance, you can take it offline. But you can schedule putting things online and let, let friends and family know. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid, and it's so simple to avoid. Bonfire is set up to avoid that problem. And it simply means that, say, the treasurer is like the owner of the site who in fact. Has to, you know, the, the association has to sign a merchant agreement to do this. You know, if the treasurer becomes the authorized user, then what the park management can do is what they need to do. Which is to download every day the sites, put up the cards, you know, for people who come and so on, but they would be unable to manipulate the system.
Right, I think that's what we're all getting at.
Yeah, I thought that's what we were doing.
But, but.
Well, I think what, what Dick is saying is that the park management would, I mean, this is a difference, I think, and Dick, you correct me if I'm wrong about this. Dick is suggesting that the park management run the entire Bonfire system. I'm suggesting that the association have a member of the board, like the treasurer. Essentially run the management, you know, the, the, the park owner section of Bonfire. And the camp management have access to the printouts every day, but not be able to manipulate campsites and so on.
Right, they need to be able to manage the sites that are there and be able to help, if there's any first come, first served. They need to be able to help those citizens get paid for those sites.
The most common reason for taking something off-site now in going forward is electrical box issues. You know, we have a pretty high failure rate of, of circuit breakers and those. And I'm sure you do too, you know, it's one of the bigger failure rates. And it's because they're out in an exposed, moisture prone area. And that's why I think on hammock weekend, I think we had something like six of the forty-four. Sites had to, had to have service on the, on the, on the, on the towers, the electrical towers. That's just because they were sitting there all winter in an exposed deal. And we have, I have the same problem. This last week, we had, I think, fourteen pivots that we had to go out to because the same problem is there. Those electrics are out, exposed within a box, in a ventilated box, but moisture gets in there and, and messes up the electrics. So, so what I'm saying is that the camp management has to have, be able to. Take sites off-site that aren't suitable for reasons like that. I, I think personally that if I have a password to get into Bonfire and I can see what's going on. I, I would probably spot some of those sorts of issues that Betty's worried about. I, you know, now I go down there a couple of times a week just to physically look things over. Make sure that some of the issues that we were worried about are there. I've got the, the list of, of folks that have seasonals. The only one that, the seasonals, the only seasonals that are gratis at this point, there's just one, is the treasurer. Gets one free site for, for the whole season. Everybody else pays the.
Right.
The amount, even those that are workers, then we pay them eleven dollars an hour for the work that they do. But they do pay a thousand dollars in order to, to have a site during the whole season.
But if you go into Bonfire and put sites on hold for your friends.
Yeah, you gotta pay for that.
Explain why, wouldn't you, Betty? Wouldn't they have to explain what, what the deal is, why we, why they put five sites on hold?
Why would we have, be putting sites on hold anyway? They're open until reserved, aren't they? Excuse me, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I guess what, what I'm saying is that, you know, I, I, I mean, today, we, we, we could, and I think we have figured out. That, you know, some people get preference. I mean, those are the phone calls we're getting. Those are the phone calls everybody's getting. It is entirely possible, if you control the entire Bonfire system, to continue to do that. And as Dick said, you know, yeah, it, it might be possible to see that. You know, in, in the record keeping, but that is. You know, the, the system is designed so that the owner controls certain things and the management controls other things. If you give owner responsibilities to the management. You know, you, you are going to have to scrutinize every single transaction and its timing to know. So how are you going to tell after the fact that a particular campsite was, you know. Put online with notice only given to a very limited number of people. I don't, I, I don't know how you do that, you know, maybe. And I, you know, I, I really think that the wise thing is to mimic the way the state does it. For all the reasons that the state has the policies and procedures that they have. They've been running campsites for a really long time. They have a lot of experience. And they separate their reservation system completely from their site management system. When a site has maintenance issues, they're able to contact. You know, the, 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 the park reservation management system to say, okay, take this offline for a period of time. But they, they, they don't control every aspect of the system and for really good reason. And, and it, it's, it's a tried and true system that worked, has worked over a period of decades. That you've got one part of the organization doing, you know, the, the reservation system, taking care of the money. Making sure the deposits come through, making sure, you know, that the lists that come out are accurate and so on. And then you have the actual camp management on the ground being able to download and see who's, you know, who's, who's reserved sites. And, and, and for how long. So that, that's what makes sense to me. I think otherwise we're paving cow paths and we're creating an electronic system that. Absolutely mimics the system we already have today.
How available is the treasurer if they have a?
One of the things, excuse me, oh, do answer that, I guess. I visited with her last night for an hour or so. And one of the things that we're implementing just the last couple of weeks is to, we want to make sure that, that campground managers. Make a deposit at the end of each weekend. By Tuesday, those deposits cannot be held. It's kind of like we do for, for here in the courthouse that we, we're not going to allow anybody to make deposits. Or like, say if there's multi-week reservations, not hold it to the end of those. That those cat, those checks and those transactions need to be in the bank.
For the Bonfire, how is she available to?
I think that she should be.
You know, I, I agree that a dual system is appropriate.
Yeah.
We do not have the funds to hire someone, but if that treasurer is getting a free campsite or paid for campsite for the season. She is being paid for, so to an extent.
This year, this year, her duties have expanded quite a bit. She's putting in about four or five hours per week. Keeping up the, you know, the more rigorous accounting.
Bonfire, what would it, it would probably be a, a phone call a, a week. Or whatever it is, contact email or whatever it is with Bonfire, to say sites two and seventeen are off for repairs.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, I think actually doing Bonfire may help it, help her. Take care of some of the bookkeeping stuff that it'll automatically be downloadable.
She wouldn't be worried about when the deposits are going in because the deposits would be automatic through Bonfire.
Correct, correct.
I make a suggestion. I think we need to try Bonfire for the rest of the year. And the reason is, is just like you just got, both have just got done stating. This way we'll, and let the treasurer be in charge, see how much more work that's going to be for her. And that way she can get a feel for it and we got something to work with. So going forward, then we'll know some of the problems. Hopefully, and be able to, the advisory board can look at this and say, okay, this is the problem. We've got to tell the board to do this. So my suggestion is that we put Bonfire for the rest of the year and put the treasurer as the person in charge, if she's willing to do it. And so that she figures out how it all works out. That way we know which ones are on hold, because as far as I can see, listening to everybody here is. The whole deal is only going to be effect, should only be on there if there's some maintenance to do on that spot, period. That's the only time, because otherwise, if you do give somebody the authority to put them on hold. They can say, well, it is maintenance, but I'm not going to cut it loose until Thursday, when, when I know, and I'll call my friend and tell them.
It's first come, first served.
At twelve oh one on Thursday.
Yes, I'm going to turn it loose.
That's what I'm thinking.
So that's my suggestion.
Sean, Sean's got a thought or two, I think.
One thing we got to think about, we just put up a new sign, so we'll have to change that. But I'm, and I'm not opposed to it because we can probably get something to put over that section of the sign, but. With the Bonfire system, they're going to have two means of, of payment primarily. And we always want them to use a credit card, of course. And then the other thing is cash, you know, at the park. I would try to avoid checks if we can. You guys had some issues with it and we've had issues in the past too. That's our last form of payment, but on ninety-nine point something have credit cards nowadays, so.
Credit or debit.
Yeah, and it's going to be a, a great way to, you know, track that, alleviate a lot of the deposits that are needed. You might not even have a deposit some weeks if it's all paid by credit card, because you don't have a day use pass or anything like that. You know, I, I have some concerns about starting it right now. Not saying that we can't do it. But just have to make sure that the starting date, we know who's going to be on what site. And maybe have some blocked off, so it's a go on that day, you know?
And we do have, you know, we have the list, site by site list that we can, that, that we can use to do that.
I would recommend on our website or the campsite or wherever, put a disclaimer of, we are trying out a new system. Bear with us.
Sure.
You know, under construction.
You know, having it, having the overall control to the treasurer, where if they need to put something on hold, they can work with the treasurer. There shouldn't be a lot of holes. Usually the electrical repairs can be done. You know, they probably have some breakers on hand to do that stuff.
Yeah, and they do, they take care of that themselves. It's an easy, easy switch and it's mainly, mostly breakers.
Yeah.
That are the issue.
Sure.
I know, last year I had one, I went over and asked Al for one, I went back and popped it in myself.
Sure.
Shouldn't, he shouldn't allow that probably, but.
No, and then the good thing, having the treasurer there camping, I mean, she's going to be right there, be a little, keep an eye on things there too.
Yeah.
So are you going to make sure, Dick, that Bonfire gets set up then?
I can do that, I can do that.
Move them forward anyway.
What we'll do is we'll amend it so that our treasurer has primary financial control of it. And operational control can be with the camp, camp, campground managers. And then with the understanding that if there's. Holds put on any individual campsites, it's got to be for a maintenance reason. And reported immediately to, to Carolyn or myself, the treasurer and myself, or Betty.
Yeah, so, so if I may just clarify, Dick, what you're saying is that. Control of the owner part of the site would remain with the treasurer. And what the management would be able to do is simply to download the list of campers and sites every day.
They have to be able to, for maintenance purposes.
That goes, that information should be transferred to the secretary and she takes care of that. So they don't, the management shouldn't have to do anything but contact the treasurer.
Right, and if they couldn't, if they couldn't get a hold of her, maybe what we could do is, would it be possible for. I think it's possible on Bonfire for there to be more in one management. Contact person could be our treasurer and probably maybe Betty, because she's the. Or it could be me, I, you know, I, I'd sure volunteer to do that. I've been, I've been, since there's been issues here. Or it could be me. I, you know, I, I'd sure volunteer to do that. I've been, I've been, since there's been issues here, you know, I've, I've. Tried to make sure that everyone involved knows that I'm involved. And just that action, I think, solves a lot of these problems. Make sure we're all communicating with each other. We know where the boundaries are and we'll make those formal in our new bylaws and policies and procedures. Betty.
Betty.
Uh, yeah, so Shane, does this sound like a workable plan for the rest of the year?
Yeah, I think it can work. Like I said, the starting point is probably the biggest hiccup is getting that. So there's no errors and don't have anybody disgruntled. That's the main thing, but I think.
Go ahead. Yeah, I was going to just ask a follow up question, which is that, and you're satisfied with the association? You're comfortable with the association continuing to do day to day management with a temporary lease?
Yeah, I think that would work fine.
Okay.
Like, like Travis said, you got a 30 day notice if something, there's an issue that can be dealt with, so. Just to give us, give the board time to write the new bylaws and, and get ready for, basically get ready for next year.
Yeah, I, I have your cell phone number now that you called me. That was, that was the downside of sending me those pictures, that I now have your cell phone numbers.
Can I ask one more question? I probably won't ask anymore. Is, okay. The idea is the group that's advisory group right now, once they get the bylaws and all that stuff done. Are they going to go away and you're just going to have the board and the county commissioners? I mean, you're going to still have three layers.
They're part of the board.
They're, I know they're part of the board.
They were just picked out of the board.
Right, right. But are they going to, once you get everything done, they're, they're still always going to be there?
They're good, well, no, they'll be, they'll just go back to the board.
Board, that's what I meant. So you're actually going to have two layers and you're just going to have the board and the commissioners.
Think of the advisory board as being a sub, sub committee.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Now, once their job's done, they, they dissolve.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Cause I thought once they've, you know, we don't want to have.
No, no, that's why we picked them out of the board.
Okay, that's why I understand that.
So I have a motion to. Rewrite the lease with the 30 day notification. And I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else?
I make a motion to his jury.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Yeah, so without, without a formal motion, we'll, we'll start the Bonfire.